Good evening, everyone. It's Tuesday, July 22nd. Where is time gone? Twenty twenty-five at six o'clock, and I'm calling this Lacey City Council Work Session to order. Everyone's present. Good to see everyone. With that, I also want to say that we, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawks Indian Tribe. And can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in fear of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion, Yamse carries. We have an agenda. First up on our approved agenda is our public comment. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this council today? Seeing none. We also didn't have any one registered on Zoom or written public comment either. So our next agenda item is the 2025 Human Services Grant Program Awards and Overview.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name's Michelle Chavez. I am, again, the Human Services Coordinator for the City of Lacey. Happy to be here tonight to speak to you about our first item on the agenda, the Human Services Grant Program Options and Recommendations. So I just wanted to kind of give you an overview of the program. In your packet, you had a summary of kind of the process that the Human Services Commission went through over a couple meetings this spring and summer. And their recommendation was they had eleven different scenarios that they looked at. And of the eleven different scenarios over two meetings, they chose one that's very similar to last year in 2024, where we chose all of the applications that were scored ninety and above, with taking into consideration that rubric where we're giving a little bit more money to those that were in the very top percentile. So again, our applications were open from April 28th to May 23rd, 2025. We held an application workshop in May. We had twenty-one applications received from twenty-one agencies. One agency did withdraw. And then the twenty remaining applicants presented to the Human Services Commission on June 5th. They were all able to give their five-minute presentation, and the commission was able to ask questions of all of the participants. Some of the participants were able to come in person, and some did present via Zoom. So this year, all of the applications were for service projects. We had one capital project last year. This year, they were all for service. The total requested was eight forty-one, seven sixty-one. We had that maximum grant amount, which you all had determined fifty thousand per agency, the maximum award. And then the total available, again, was similar to last year of three hundred thousand. So again, this is just to cap the priorities, or this is similar from 2024, housing, survival, and security, basically meeting those essential needs such as affordable housing, access to food, water, shelter, and kind of those basic security items like job training and placement, help in times of crisis, transportation, et cetera. In your packet, you have a summary that's easier to read, but this is a list of all of the agencies who applied. And kind of from the top score all the way down to the lowest score, we took an average of all the scores. And you see the total score, and then you also see the average highest score. So of those agencies ranked twenty down to one to twenty. So again, just to recap, our Human Services Commission discussed this over two meetings. It was a very difficult conversation to have. As you know, the ask is always much larger than what we have available, almost three times usually what we have available. So and every agency is very worthy of these funds. And so it's an extremely difficult conversation to have because we want to give everybody something, but we want to figure out how do we make the most impact with the pot of money that we do have. So our commission discussed eleven different scenarios, which is in your packet. And you can see how they sliced it up all different ways to try to look at all the different ways we could potentially divide up the funds. Some of the things they discussed were, you know, whether we should fund all the agencies or we should fund some, what would be the most impactful, being able to make an impact considering, you know, some of the asks were very large. And then if we were to spread it out amongst everyone, some folks would get a very, very small portion of what they asked for. And I believe that impacted their decision-making process. And then they considered, you know, what is, how does that application match with the priorities of the program? And then how are these funds restricted compared to other funds that agencies might have? These funds are less restricted than a lot of federal funds, so there is a lot of flexibility with these. So kind of this is just to summarize the options, and it really does fall into two buckets. It falls into whether we want to spend, spread all the money to everybody, or we want to have a focus of some of the funds on the higher-scoring agencies who may be able to make a bigger impact. So this chart is also in your staff report, and it really does show opportunities and challenges with each approach. So the funding to everybody, you have opportunities to promote more inclusivity, maybe give smaller agencies a chance who haven't been able to participate, may encounter greater stakeholder engagement. Some of the challenges may dilute and minimize the impact. Again, if you ask for fifty thousand and you're only going to get two thousand, what are you really able to accomplish with that? May increase the administrative burden for us managing it. It may mean less money overall for programming. The focus on, the other approach was to focus on the select high-potential applicants. So the opportunities for that are enable stronger outcomes, measurable results, potential higher return on investment, and to decrease the overall administrative burden on the city. Challenges of that, we may overlook some emerging services that are for smaller agencies, may reinforce potential concerns about bias and accessibility, and again, may reduce opportunities for emergent agencies and innovation. So here we have our options, eleven options. And you can see the spectrum from one to eleven. It goes from funding everybody all across the board equally to equal funding for scores over ninety. That was what we used last year. A percentile, which is the sixty-five percent. We split this percentile in many different ways to see which way it would break out. Looking at only funding the top agencies who ordered, who scored the top level, you could break it up by priority of priority areas such as housing. Some of these options were provided by commissioners. So number six was an opportunity a commissioner came up with to fund twenty-two thousand at the top, and then nine thousand to the next four agencies, which gets to some of the smaller agencies that were lower on the scoring percentile. And then again, just different ways to look at the percentiles. And then number ten is not recommended because the way that worked out, there was two agencies who had the exact same score who would have got a different allocation. So that was a no-go for that one. And then again, after weighing all these different options over two meetings, they came to a consensus on this, similar to last year, the sixty percent, ninety-five and up. So they would get a little bit more money than kind of the straight across the board, and then forty-six percent to those ninety and up. So that would again be funding all the agencies that scored above ninety, similar to what we did last year. So here's their recommendation. This chart just shows how it breaks up in terms of the left and the right. Those are all the agencies that would be funded above ninety. And then you can see there's a little bit of a wider drop in scores after you get past that eighty-nine score. So it goes down a little bit more precipitously. So again, this is a recommendation based on percentiles. The scores ninety and above, we'd give thirty thousand to, or the total requested, whatever's less. So if they ask for only twenty-five thousand, they would get twenty-five thousand, not thirty thousand. Scores ninety to ninety-five, we would award forty-six percent, twenty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. And again, this is similar to last year.
Michelle, can I ask a question?
Yes.
I notice you have sixty percent at scores above ninety-five, and then forty-six percent at ninety to ninety-five.
That's of the fifty thousand max.
Right. So that was just how it broke out. And if we were to fund the top scores above ninety-five at sixty percent, what was left in order to fund an equal amount? It worked out to be forty-six percent.
Forty-six, okay. It was just like, wait a minute, that doesn't add up.
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, future considerations we are taking under, taking under our belt is continued community outreach and engagement around setting priorities. We want to continue with our needs assessment and getting feedback from the community about what are the priority needs to hopefully narrow the scope so we don't have as big of a net to cast for priorities and possibly being able to, you know, funnel some of those priorities down into maybe one or two or three rather than the big, big basket. We want to possibly identify, you know, maybe housing, behavioral health, or whatever that comes out of that research and data. We may look at policy adjustments, potentially a cap for administrative and staffing, taking into consideration agencies, so smaller agencies, maybe they have a portion of the funds, and then larger agencies, another portion. So those are things that we've continued to talk to the commission about, and you as well in the future. And that concludes my presentation. I'll open it up for questions.
I have a question. I was just wondering, and if we're not doing it already, if there's a way to require a like follow-up thirty-second video, like highlighting what they're doing either from them, or maybe that the city goes out and does just so we can highlight these organizations throughout the year?
That's a great question. We do require reporting on this program, so quarterly and annual reports. And we can report back once we have all the data from 2024 and bring it back to you all and talk about, you know, where, what was the successes. And we do go out and monitor as well. So part of the agreement to get the funding is that you agree to submitting quarterly and annual reports, and you also agree to a site visit by myself to make sure that the funds are being spent the way that they are.
And I mean, I'm more so like a video highlighting a project or what they're using it for, that we could, you know, use for our own media.
That's a great idea. That's a great idea. I think we should definitely ask for that when we do the annual reports. Maybe we could put an ask out for video as well to say, if you want to submit a video with your annual report, we'd love to use that in our storytelling to tell what we're doing well.
Yeah.
Other questions? I mean, I think I spoke about this when we started this process for this year. I'm all for looking at the collective impact. I know we don't have a lot of funds, but I want to make sure, you know, the funds that we do have are going to the greatest needs. And so to have a needs assessment is, I think, a really important part of this whole process because, I mean, these are all great programs. I mean, they're all doing, you know, important work in our community. However, you know, we, at some point, we have to make a decision. And I hope that decision's based on we're giving the greatest number of dollars to the programs that are in the greatest need. And so, you know, I think that's just something that you'll have to continue to look at, and the commission will have to continue to look at. And, you know, we'll have to make some tough decisions on this. But, I mean, I'm all for going with the recommendation of this committee, this, what they do, what they put the work in. I want to respect that work. And so, you know, if this is the decision they've made, then that's something I'll support. But I'm still, you know, hopefully can you work on that needs assessment? And that will hopefully, you know, can maybe narrow some things down in the future, which is tough because then some organizations go without some dollars. But I think that's just the way we've always sort of kind of the approach we've had, you know, let's go after the greatest need and try to help that way. So it's kind of the Lacey way.
Completely, I definitely will support this. But I think a lot of weight needs to be given or looked at for the future about what has the most impact, not just who has the biggest need, but where do the dollars have the most impact in our community, right? So is spreading it among twelve of them the best impact? Or would there be a better impact if some of these organizations that scored better actually got more than this, you know, even if it meant less organizations getting the money? I just want to have this big an impact. I mean, three hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far, but I'd like to see it have as much impact on our community as possible.
I'm just gonna do a quick plug for All Kids Win. I think they've been around so long, and they do so much. I think every service club in this county has bagged, bags for kids or delivered pallets, like myself. Their impact is, goes far more reaching than any of us can really fully understand. I think we should bump them up to seventy-five, even though, I mean, ninety-five, even though they scored ninety-three and a half or whatever it is.
Two things. One, I do actually really like the independence of this community, or this committee, because there's a lot of people in here with tons of ties to Lacey. And so I think having that separation really is a positive thing overall. And so no one could view, you know, one, one organization getting money. I just had a question on the funds, though. Are they able to use those, do they have to use it in a certain timeframe? Or is it just kind of like they get to use as needed? Could they spread it across two years? Or is it just, how does that kind of process work once they get?
So right now, the, thank you, Councilmember Dunning. Right now, the program year is one year, one, so it goes from the beginning of the calendar, the start of the program for this year ends, I believe, it's, ends September 30th. So those funds won't necessarily go away. We will have them. But they have, they don't get to extend it unless there's like some unforeseen circumstance where they ask for an extension, we wouldn't extend those contracts.
So do they, do they, do they spend the money and then get a reimbursement? Is that how it works?
Correct.
Okay.
That is, it's cost reimbursement, and everything needs to have receipts.
Gotcha.
Does anyone disagree with the Human Services Commission recommendation? Okay, well, this, this will be before us at our next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
For this question. Do you have anything?
No, I mean, I concur with what you've said and what councilmember has said, that we created this committee to put a lot of thought and effort into identifying the best way to deliver limited funds to groups that deserve it. So I, I support the recommendation of the committee, of the commission.
I do, too. I mean, I've done a lot of this work trying to distribute money, and it's, they're tough choices. But it's hard work. And I know, I mean, coming up with ten different options, eleven options, that's a lot of time and commitment to this. So thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
So I was probably the one person who was like, I don't like the rubric. I don't want to use it. I'd rather have them come in and hear their stories and distribute the money in such a way that, but I do respect the work that this, this group did in exploring as many options as they did, right? It's incredible amount of options to explore when you're volunteering on a Thursday night after work or whatever the case may be. And so it looks like, you know, there was a consorted effort to really find out what's the best way to distribute these funds that they can have, you know, the biggest impact in the community. And I, and I think they did a good job. And so, you know, whereas I was not on board before with the rubric scoring and the, how the funds were going to be dispersed, and how many people got left out was my real issue. But as, as we continue doing this and seeing how much work the group has put into trying to figure out how can we distribute these dollars in such a way that they're really going to affect Lacey as, 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 as good as they possibly can. I, I look at this now, and I think, you know, this is good work. There's a lot of hard work. And, and so I'm in support.
One quick question. Is there, are there any awardees from last year that won't, that aren't going to use their, all of the money that was awarded to them by September? Do you, I mean, do you expect?
As far as I know, I'm expecting everyone to use their grants. We're over halfway spent already. So I expect we'll use most of it, if not all.
Were there any return?
They need to grant the money and they don't?
Applicants who are, who've scored higher than ninety again?
There were lots of return applicants.
Lots of return applicants.
I will, I will say that I don't know how ten others scored higher than All Kids Win, also known as homeless backpacks or previously known as. But it just, I think it shows that all the good work that nonprofits and people are doing in their community.
Okay. Well, this will be before us at our next council meeting. And our next agenda item was along the same lines, our Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan Review.
Okay. Thank you for that. And this, again, is just for discussion only, and we'll bring it back to you all in August for action. You have a summary in your packet of our Community Development Block Grant Program, and it's exciting where we are now. We are getting all of our deliverables completed and getting ready to take that final step for submission to the Housing and Urban Development Department as our own entitlement community. So I just have a few quick slides to go over with you tonight. Again, the Human Services Commission has looked at this. You had in your packet a summary of the consolidated plan, which is your larger document. And then you have a summary of your action plan, which is your shorter document in your packet. The Human Services Commission did review the plans and has recommended submittal to you all as they were presented. They did not have a lot of significant changes recommended to the plans. So this aligns with the city goal that you had passed about creating the plans and coming up with a standalone entitlement program for Lacey, and then continuing to manage our funds internally here going forward after 2025. It also aligns with our DEIB goals, strategic goal alignment here in terms of, you know, strategically utilizing our human services programming and funding and working towards increasing our quality of life as we do our studies and our community outreach and engagement to help set those priorities. We talked a little bit about the Lacey area benefit. We were looking to expand the first year, couple of years, funding in our area benefit areas. So there's two federally designated areas that are eligible for these funds. And in the con plan, these are the kind of the big buckets. I'm obviously not going to go over the eighty-page plan, or I think it's like seventy-some pages. But it's executive summary. It talks about the goals, the priorities, and the past performance of the City of Lacey. We've had these funds for many, many years. They were previously managed through Thurston County, and we were a part of that, and we got them every three years. Whereas now, as we've become an entitlement, we would be getting them annually. We talk about our past performance, the monitoring that we've recently undergone. We are very successful with that. I think Lacey's been very successful with their Community Development Block Grant Programs in the past. And so executive summary gives you obviously a quick, down-and-dirty summary of the whole plan. The process, there's a lot of consultation and community engagement required by the federal government in order to get these funds. So you'll look in there, you'll see charts. There's like fourteen different outreach activities that we participated in to get feedback on the process. The needs assessment is really ours, this, this is considered an amendment to that five-year plan that we submitted with Thurston. This is considered an amendment, so our plan is for three years, not five years. We're going to get back on track with that five-year and probably all go together then as the five-year in 2027. So this needs assessment really focused on non-housing community development needs. There's a whole section on housing needs that was submitted with Thurston County's five-year plan. You can definitely go in and review that, but we weren't required to do a needs assessment on housing for this portion. We did have to do a public infrastructure report on how do we determine our community needs for public infrastructure, as well as things like human services that are not capital-based. Two more sections, market analysis, community economic overview. There's a section in there that talks all about jobs and educational outcomes and economic outcomes for our community. You'll find that in there, as well as the typical earnings for the community. Then a strategic plan portion goes on our goal strategies and priorities. They're not significantly different than the five-year plan because things have not radically changed since we submitted our five-year plan. You'll see that they pretty much go in line with what was submitted. We have to talk about also beyond just setting priorities, what do we do for homelessness prevention, outlining all the things the city does in order to address homelessness, lead-based paint hazards, that's always a requirement when the federal government has, you know, asks for reports, our anti-poverty strategy, and then monitoring. So what will we do to create a monitoring program for Lacey? The Annual Action Plan has several sections, again, introduction, projects, potential projects, geographic distribution, and a big section on other actions which go beyond just kind of what the projects are. But we have to report on how do we maintain affordable housing? What do we do for lead-based paint? How do we reduce the number of poverty-level families? Develop an institutional structure, enhance coordination between public and private housing and social service agencies. And then the last section is program-specific requirements, which do not apply to Lacey because we do not have program income or Section Eight loans or an urgent need. So again, we talked about setting the original, for these first few years, focusing on public facilities and infrastructure, but also putting in their public services and housing, which were all part of our five-year plan. Now they're going to be in our three-year plan. Just, this is all refresher for you. You've seen this. Just, this is all refresher for you. You've seen this several times before, but the national objectives are to benefit low to moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention of slum and blight, and then meet an, or meet an urgent need. And then our estimated allocation is three forty-eight, three ninety-three. How do we certify projects? After our plan is submitted, reviewed, and accepted, we can look through projects and put them forward. We need to meet a national objective, make sure that they meet one of these three criteria, area benefit, limited clientele, and how, or housing. And if we had any questions, we would consult with our HUD office before going forward with submitting that. So these are just our deliverables. We are, we've completed our community participation plan. We've completed our timeline. The draft of the three-year plan is complete, and the draft of the action plan is complete. Next steps, we would bring it back to council in August for action. We would submit for review and approval to HUD August sixth. We would, again, begin the program year September one, and that would go again for a year. So it'd be September one to August thirtieth. And then we would begin reviewing eligible projects at the city and look at any kind of environmental assessment that would need to be done that hasn't already been completed. That concludes my presentation. I will open it up for questions.
When do we actually receive those funds?
That's a good question.
And, and what, there's an estimated amount. Do we know when that will, when that will finalize?
That is the final number that's passed through Congress. It's in the budget. Unless something unforeseen happens with that allocation, we expect that. That was in, sent in writing to us. That's what we're going to get.
Three forty-eight.
It just, they have this forty-five, it's like, we have a thirty-day review and comment period. You saw in the report, there's all these public opportunities for the public to give input. You know, there's the public hearing, the thirty-day review and comment, then there's the second public hearing. HUD also has a forty-five-day review and comment period. And then if they send us back, then we, the clock starts over. So how, when we get the funds is when the whole review is completed. So that can take several months before we get the, you know, the funds. And again, that's a reimbursement process as well.
Okay.
I just wanted to offer congratulations on getting all of those different documents done. You had to write five different plans in order to make us, like, we made the decision to shift and create our own, you know, become our own jurisdiction in this, but there was a lot of work to do, the community engagement, and all those public comment opportunities, and those various different plans and reports. So kudos for getting those all done.
Thank you.
I know, it's, it's a lot of work, for sure. Okay, so best-case scenario, when do, will they start selecting projects?
We will, once we get the plan approved, probably early first quarter.
Okay.
And then we have, you know, the money technically doesn't go away, so it stays in our coffers if, for some reason, with capital projects, sometimes there's unforeseen delays. So they don't say, oh, you lost the funds. They, they understand that sometimes things don't happen in a calendar year.
Okay.
I just want to say, for as much time and effort went into both these programs, I want to thank you for very clear and concise presentations.
Thank you. You're welcome.
And the, the Human Services Group is going to go make the selection on projects as well, right?
Yes, they'll, they'll oversee that kind of projects, and we'll let them review. They'll review everything before it gets to you to kind of look at the sausage, what do you call it, make the sausage, and then when it gets to you, it'll look really nice.
Has, has a discussion been made about what Lacey is going to use for, for the oversight of it? What, you know, the, the cost that they're going to charge the program, wherever?
You're talking about like, let's see, the private admin costs?
Yeah, admin costs, yeah.
There is, that's part, will be part of the conversation with the human services fund.
I just, you know, it's, I guess it's always been a pet peeve of mine that, that, that's been a high, high number. I know it's a ton of work. I, I get it, but it's, you know, every dollar that's, you know, that we keep, it's not going out into.
That's a good point. I think we've always demonstrated being diligent in what we do. It's always looking at how to offset and, and not try to get full recovery, but try to offset some and blend multiple sources of, of dollars to fund something. And as you can all imagine, too, with CBD dollars, there is a little bit higher level of work associated with it because of the reporting and accounting requirements with the federal dollars. And so that adds another complexity layer to some of our other programs, like the Human Services Fund, too. So that's all going to take into account, and we'll take this through and make a recommendation to council.
Okay.
Have percentages been considered?
Not, not at this point.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then our next item is our interlocal agreement for Thurston County District Court. We've seen this as well, so this shouldn't be new.
Hello, I am Kristy Wolf, Financial Services Manager for the City of Lacey. I'm here to present the Thurston County District Court Interlocal Agreement for the Violations Bureau. We first brought this matter to you in twenty, let's see, April twenty-second, related to the 2025 Budget Amendment. And at that time, we just had a really brief discussion about transferring violations to the county. So a little bit of background, the City of Lacey currently manages the Violations Bureau through the Utility Billing Division. While this structure serves the administrative purpose of the Lacey Municipal Code, the responsibilities of the Violations Bureau increasingly are misaligned with the core functions and strategic direction of the Utility Billing Division, which primarily focuses on customer service and utility account management. To improve operational efficiency and ensure that more effective handling of violations-related matters, the city's conducted several or numerous discussions with Thurston County District Court regarding the potential transfer of all Violations Bureau functions to the county. And under this arrangement, the county would assume the full responsibility for processing, adjudicating, and administering all Violations Bureau cases originating in the City of Lacey. The current interlocal agreement contemplates the filing fees for Lacey violations that are presented directly to Thurston County District Court, but this proposal would increase Thurston County filings by about a thousand filings per year. The annual cost is expected to begin about seventy-four thousand dollars. Assuming the transfer of Lacey violations begin on October first, 2025, the estimated remaining twenty-five, twenty-two-five cost would be thirty-two thousand, which includes fourteen thousand to transfer the items already in process and current outstanding Violations Bureau filings. So the benefits of the proposed change would include operational alignment, which would allow the Utility Billing Division to focus exclusively on its core service responsibilities and minimize cross-functional burdens, increasing internal efficiencies. Another benefit would be expertise and consistency. Thurston County District Court is better positioned to manage such legal and administrative functions with their own established procedures and judicial resources. And another benefit would be customer service improvement for more consistent and streamlined processing of violation cases through the court's established systems. So it's recommended that the City Council authorize staff to finalize an amendment to the District Court interlocal agreement, which would be presented for authorization at a future City Council meeting. So we can open up for questions?
So, yeah, a couple of questions. Can you, can you give me some examples of the thousand estimated filings a year? What are the majority of those filings? Is it?
Most of them are traffic citations. A few of them are parking.
Okay, but is it just, is it just the parking and, just on that side of things? Is there any other violations that they would be in charge of?
That's mostly what the Lacey Violations Bureau handles on this side. So the Utility Billing Division would handle just those, primarily.
Okay.
I think there's some joint animal services citations as well.
Okay.
So joint animal service citations, and then mostly parking and? Driving infractions, okay.
Are the utility billing employees represented?
Yes, they are.
So is this bargaining in at work?
I know that the Human Resources Division has, or Department has contacted the union to advise that this is.
We have, we have reached out and apprised the, the union of this work and talking to them, so LaLanne's been leading that effort.
In addition, there's no plans to reduce staff because of this as well.
Right. That was going to be my next question. I'm, I'm guessing our utility billing people have plenty of work to do?
Yes.
And so this might improve their situation by better aligning their functions with their core work, their essential work that they do every day?
Correct.
Thank you.
Questions? Go ahead. Yep. So in regards to the utility billing portion of this, and if we're going to be outsourcing that work, I remember in the past, we spoke about potentially also alerting the property owner or the property manager.
That's why, that's why I asked this question, because it's nothing, yeah.
We're not, because this doesn't address utility.
No.
This is just moving violation and?
Yes.
And parking.
Moving the violations to the county.
But we, didn't we also discuss the possibility of doing this, a similar thing with utility, or?
No, talking about just our utility billing framework, no, we are still working on our, our systems and process improvements, but it's all continued to be working in, within the utility billing section.
So that'll come to us in the future.
Yeah.
So that's the biggest difference, is our utility billing used to be in charge of having to process and handle all these, all these other violations. And so now we're moving that to the District Court.
And one of the challenges we have is it takes about a half FTE to do the violations section, but then again, when you're dealing with a dynamic of the utility billing calendar, it makes it tough to keep up with that FTE, half FTE work, and so it just takes that off so we can focus on utility billing.
Is this, but this is mostly just keeping track of after a violation's been given, the, the collection of that, and the filing of that, and so on and so forth, that, so.
As you get your ticket, you have those options to request a court date, and pay the fine.
And you pay the fine, it would come to our utility billing, but now it's going to go to Thurston County.
Just record all, consult in one spot.
So I guess, I guess the question is, is what, obviously, we see the cost of the utility, you know, of providing this, is, do they take a percentage of it, or how do they figure, how are these costs figured for the county? Is it on a per violation, or is it a percentage of it, or?
It's on a per-file basis, and the current contract is seventy-seven dollars per file. So it's, you know, a hundred times seventy-seven.
Sure.
We do, we will receive our share of the violation, just, it doesn't matter who actually provides that service. So we'll still receive our revenues as if we were processing it.
Okay.
There's a, you know, it's a pretty complicated splitting of those fines. Some goes to the county, some goes, actually, there's several state departments that receive a share of that.
Sure. I guess that, that was going to be my question, is, yeah, there's a, a cost to providing this. Are we then going to lose money on the other side as well? But no, okay.
Deputy Mayor had another question.
Okay. So, you know, as we distribute this paper to the county, and I, I guess my question is, what is, what is the amount that we're distributing to them, the collection amount in dollars? Are we, I know that we were behind like one point five, or something along those lines, in, in fines that we were trying to collect?
You're talking about utilities again.
No, no, well, no, no, I know, I'm not talking about utility billing. I'm talking about traffic violations and parking.
I don't know. Are we in the rears?
Or is it just current?
We go through our normal collection process, but, yeah, they're, I'm not sure where the one point five.
So there is no rears portion that we're trying to, that we're, that we're selling right off top?
No, I mean, there's a portion that's being transferred to the county. They're in various states of collection, so.
Do you know what that portion is?
I couldn't tell you at the top of my head, but it's, I mean, there's just always some portion of unpaid that ends up going to collection agencies and, and that type of, you know, enforcement. But, yeah, I don't know the number.
Do you know how many we have to transfer at this point? I know that's really specific and granulated, but.
I'm not sure, because there are different stages. They'll get the ticket, and then there's thirty days, and then they'll get failure to appear, and then there's some amount of time, and so there's many that are in those stages at all times. So I don't know the number that we would transfer.
You want to have any questions? Okay, this will also come before us. Thanks. Hook along here? There's a staff recommendation, oh, that's just the staff recommendation for next time.
Yep.
It's kind of confusing. Our next agenda IM is the disposition of surplus city-owned property.
Okay. Good evening, Council, Mayor Vanessa Dolby, Community Economic Development Director, here to present the Mullen Road property. This is not the first time we've talked about this property, but this is the first time we're going to talk about this property where the city is the owner. So, yeah, so big step as of, and, and actually, before I get going, I want to also acknowledge that Craig Chance is in the audience here, so if there's any questions for the Housing Authority tonight, we do have them here as well. But on June thirtieth, 2025, the city did become the official owner of the Mullen Road property for a final sale price of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollars and some change. And if, if you remember back, the purchase and sales agreement was at four hundred and fifty, so that additional dollars is really just title escrow dollars that came into play. Just by way of reminder, if you don't have it memorized yet, the property is approximately five point three acres in size. It's forested. It's across the street from Camatchan Middle School. What's fun about this slide here is the current owner is City of Lacey. And then our appraisal, appraisal value of this property was at seven hundred thousand. The interesting, the assessed value is actually about one point three million. Yep.
That's a big difference.
Someone needs to talk to the assessor about that.
And that's important because it's in our, it's in our surplus property disposition to know what that assessed value is. So just, again, by way of background, we entered a purchase and sales agreement with a lot Clean Water Alliance to purchase this property back in April. We obviously closed on the property, but the main contingency of this purchase is that the property is utilized for affordable housing pursuant to state and Lacey Municipal Code. The conversation tonight, however, is talking about taking that next step of surplusing the property and the property disposition for this development of affordable housing. So by way of looking at the parameters for surplus property and looking at our newly adopted Lacey Municipal Code 2.74, we're really seeking to surplus the property and be able to have direct negotiations with the Housing Authority of Thurston County as a nonprofit, quote, similar entity, and I do want to call this out because in the staff report, it says nonprofit, but technically, they are a public body, corporate and political of the state of Washington, which is a similar entity, so it meets our requirements, and also as an organization that aligns with the city's affordable housing goals. And then as a part of the surplus parameters, we're also looking at a requirement for the property to be developed with affordable housing consistent with these regulations, and then entering into, or requiring a recorded covenant on the property to ensure affordability, and entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Housing Authority. So in your packet, you may have seen some draft documents, a, a number of things you've seen before, but one was the memorandum of understanding, the other is the covenant. Just to note, those are draft. We're working through some of the details there, but the main components in the memorandum of understanding is that there is a commitment to, again, develop the site for affordable housing consistent with the regulations, which is for households who income are at eighty percent of the AMI or less. That a portion of the project will be dedicated to senior housing, as we've discussed in the past, and this is primarily as a result of obligations by existing funding that the Housing Authority has available to them to develop senior housing. Second, the Housing Authority will coordinate multi-generational housing conversations with the North Thurston School District. In that relationship, having the property directly across the street from the school district, there's a lot of opportunities to expand on the development here and have a multi-generational component. And then, in addition to our regular process, an agreement to hold a public meeting with the community in the area. Within the area, the neighborhood, the surrounding HOAs, there's a church next door, and to talk about and collect feedback in regards to the development proposal before a formal application comes into the city for permitting. And then, lastly, to transfer this property or complete the, the sale by September thirtieth of this year. And the reason for that date is it's really being driven by other funding mechanisms for the development by the Housing Authority. And then looking at the restrictive covenant, which would be a second document recorded on the property if the council chooses to surplus this property, and it would meet the minimum requirements under our regulations, primarily restricting the property to be. minimum requirements under our regulations, primarily restricting the property to be solely for the purposes of affordable housing, consistent with those state regulations at 80% of the AMI or less, and then also identifying what would happen if for some reason the property isn't developed pursuant to those requirements, such as does the property come back to the city or another agreed upon price maybe that the Housing Authority would pay the city if that happened. And really, I'm here tonight to talk about two things. One, get direction from the council as to whether they would like to declare the property surplus and move forwards with direct negotiations with the Housing Authority. And if that's the case, then we could bring a resolution back before the council. And then second, to discuss and establish a sales price for this if the council chooses to move forwards, which could be as low as $0.
So my first quick question is, and I hope this is the case, obviously, the City of Lacey purchased this property and I agree with every, you know, the covenants and to be able to surplus it and for everything that's been lined out here. Can we go just to straight to one nonprofit? We don't have to make this accessible to any nonprofit? Like, we don't, there doesn't have to be some sort of competitive bid to do it, especially if we, if we do it for less than the, what we purchased it for?
No. There's no additional requirement.
Okay. That's good. For making sure. And I guess the other question was, is the, is the Housing Authority, is there a dollar in mind? Are they, are they expecting to, a $0 price or is there, is there something in between or have you been, had that conversation?
Well, I was gonna say, it's, it's always hard to speak on behalf of somebody else who's sitting right behind you. However, if I had to wager a guess, they, they would love to see $0. As you could see in my staff report, I indicated $1 as staff's recommendation, just to allow for some transaction piece there.
Yeah. And the benefit of that is, is the $0 are going into the project versus the property.
That's the idea about it, right? Go ahead, Ron.
If memory serves, one of the reasons we wanted to move so quickly on this is because there were some dollars that came into, like, that were accessible by the Housing Authority for a project in Tumwater that didn't end up happening. So are those dollars still on the table? Because there was some urgency to getting this done so that we could continue to use that funding.
My understanding is yes, unless.
They're not.
Those dollars, yeah, come on up. Those dollars are still on the table and that's why we have the September 30th desired deadline.
Yes. Go ahead and turn on your mic.
Thank you.
The answer is yes. And the two primary grant sources are the Washington State Housing Trust Fund, and they've been gracious, patient as we have worked on moving the project over to Lacey. As you may recall, the Tumwater, we were fairly far along in the permitting process and a second gopher study was required, or a couple of gophers moved in, so nothing's going to happen there for a while. And the second major source of funding in the grant realm is the county local home fund.
Go ahead.
I mean, we've been discussing this, obviously, for quite some time and I think our intent the entire time and the whole reason that we bought this land, this property from Lot was to surplus it and turn it over to the Housing Authority. So I mean, to me, this is a no-brainer. I think we should just get it done.
I agree, and I agree with the staff recommendation of $1. That's amenable to the powers that be here.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Let's make it happen.
And I think, I think Council, once this is set, really needs to thank Lot as well because the Lot Board and the executive director were pretty gracious in agreeing to sell it to us for less than the appraised value, never mind what it's actually worth. So they really did us a solid because they believe in projects like this, so.
How, how, how quick are you guys ready to go if, if this all goes through?
Tom, sitting behind me here is our Tom Ross, and Director of Development Administration can handle it, address it maybe more specifically, but we're working on the neighborhood meeting aspect that Vanessa outlined, with requested from a local title company in Excel format, names, addresses of property owners in the South Park subdivision and the surrounding roughly 500-foot radius, so we'll get that organized ASAP. We already were working with an architect, a local architect, for what was originally going to be in Tumwater and have identified the last, actually this afternoon, identified with them that we'd like to get that back in their pipeline to do the drawings. And then similar, as Vanessa alluded to, we have rules we operate under that are very similar to yours as a governmental entity, so we have to go through a bidding process and try to find the most competent, lowest-priced bidder. The design we have is the cottage village, as you may recall, and that was for two reasons. One, particularly for the seniors, it creates some nice interaction when everybody's not simply stacked up, there's a better neighborhood feel to it. But it is also a quicker and a less costly way to get this done, and that was originally one of our major concerns, what can we do quickly and most cost-effectively? So, you know, we would be probably building and, say, site development, you know, we have to work, obviously, with you, all the staff here at the city, who, as a side note, has been extremely helpful, extremely gracious, just, I underline that word, exceptional, but we'll be working with them through the permitting process and meeting those requirements the city has and accommodating the needs of the neighborhood. But it would sure be wonderful if we could get actual dirt moving in 2026.
That's great. And then, as you know, here in the City of Lacey, we have reduced or no fees for, for any, for, for this housing type, so we look forward to that being a success story and hopefully seeing more come to Lacey as well.
Appreciate it.
I have a question and a comment.
Go ahead.
So the property in Tumwater that was unable to be completed, was that, did that revert back to the original owner or how did that?
We put down a substantial down payment on it, 50% of the price. We have a note with the seller, and so we continue to pay on that and maybe more than you're asking, but we're hopeful that Port Olympia has a big interest and obviously, property's out that way, and they're working with the City of Tumwater on a habitat conservation plan that ultimately would have to be approved by U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. So we are hopeful that down the road, maybe in three years or whatever that might take, we'll be able to build something on that as well. And it has also some nice opportunities. It's similar to this property, being on bus lines, near medical services and other kind of important services for residents, and it also happens to be next door to an existing 40-unit property the Housing Authority already owns. So we, we're going to be patient and hopeful that all parties can work out something that's reasonable.
We wish you the best of luck there.
Thank you.
The reason I ask is because in the appraiser's report, he notes that the lack of pocket gophers on this parcel would, is what he called, he or she called, an extraordinary assumption. Right? So, so let's say you do your pocket gopher study and you don't get the result that you want, what, how do we move forward there?
Well, the one good thing about this, I feel very confident that it's wooded and not pocket gopher habitat, so I'm feeling, feeling pretty strong about this.
We can actually add a little more clarity, because I know Vanessa can speak to this because that was part of our due diligence in purchasing the property, so.
Yeah, before we purchased the property from Lot Clean Water Alliance, we conducted a pocket gopher study as a part of that so that we didn't spend dollars on property that couldn't be developed.
Yeah.
And the outcome of that was positive that there was no pocket gophers found on this particular piece of property.
Okay.
And we'll be cautious about not doing a darn thing.
Until you're ready to go.
Because right now, if you observe that property, it's very brushy and trees and apparently that's not the preference of gophers.
Yeah. You don't, you don't want to clear it all and let it sit for years and years.
You are correct.
Okay, well, I would like to direct staff to come over the rest of the decision to declare the Mullen Road property surplus pursuant to Lacey Municipal Code Chapter 2.74, disposal of surplus real property for affordable housing to the Housing Authority of Thurston County and get that ready for us for $1.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
And Craig did say he came with a buck in his pocket, so.
Okay, well, just like that, we've gone through our agenda, but we are going to now go to an executive session for the City Council Manager Review. The council will meet an executive discussion to discuss performance of a public employee. We're all here present, so no one's going to be doing remotely. The time now is 6:55. Let's meet there at 7:05 and we'll, we'll meet for 30 minutes, so we'll hopefully come back and adjourn at 7:35. If not, I will add some more time to it if needed. So we are going to adjourn to the executive session that will start at 7:05. Forgot about the go for.
It is seven thirty five and council meeting is back in order. We have now reached our agenda. No action was taken in our executive session, so without objection, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.